Good morning. This meeting of the Blair County Board of Commissioners will come to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection, after which we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their moral and righteous stance on nation and her God, in the visual, contemplative, and rational call.
Nicole, can you do a roll call here and see if anyone's joining us virtually today?
I can. We are...I'm not sure if this is still working or not.
We know for a fact that Helen Schmidt's not joining us virtually yet.
Oh, there she is. Oh, good. Phew. I was worried that Zoom wasn't working and you weren't going to be able to call in. Okay. Good morning, Helen. If there's anyone joining us remotely, if they could please state their name for the record. Not hearing anyone else there, that is wrong.
Okay. Thank you very much. Under item five in your agenda, you'll see the schedule of upcoming meetings. Would you have an executive session announcement?
That's the other thing I was looking for. So, last meeting that we announced an executive session on, I have to apologize, the meeting date was November 14th. I had announced the executive session was held on the 9th, and that was...or on the 10th, I'm sorry. I announced that it was on the 10th. It was incorrect. The last executive session that I had announced, to clarify for the minutes that you will be approving soon, the executive session was held November 9th with the two commissioners were present. That would be Commissioner Burke and Commissioner Webster. Now, I'm still flubbing this up. Hold on. I gotta go back a week. Okay. So, the last interview, I messed up. So, it was November 3rd. The interview was with HR Director, myself, Catherine Swiger, and two of the three commissioners, which would have been Commissioner Burke and Commissioner Webster, for one open position. Then I do need to announce a second executive session was held on Thursday, November 9th. That was again for an interview with...that would be two commissioners, Commissioner Urb and Commissioner Webster, that time, and that was at 1:00 on the 9th. Also Catherine Swiger and Melina Kegler were in the room with myself and the two commissioners. That concludes our executive session clarification and announcement. Thank you.
Our commissioners have received drafts of the meeting minutes for November 14th and 16th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Webster, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
They are approved, and we will move on at this time and open the meeting to any public comment. Right. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Webster?
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody, if you know any veterans that live here in Blair County, there is a real estate tax rate rebate that is available for them if they're 100% disabled. This issue came up a couple of weeks ago. Somebody inquired about it, and I thought it might not be bad to just remind folks that it's there. They should contact Eric Kay in Veterans Affairs Office if they have any questions or need help with their documentation. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Burke?
Thank you. I wanted to just announce and remind everyone, we canceled our meetings last week due to the CCAP Fall Conference in addition to the Thanksgiving holiday, and one of the items at CCAP that the Commissioners Association did was vote on our 2024 priorities, which you'll be hearing more about next year. But I did want to mention that two of those, or actually, three of those are things that we have discussed before, one of which the county mental health-based funding increase that we desperately need, also addressing inmates with mental health issues, and finally, a new one, I believe, for this, for next year, which is affecting our county significantly, is the juvenile detention capacity crisis. So, that was the subject of many conversations I had with other counties last week, and you'll be hearing more about our efforts to address those issues next year.
Thank you very much. Nicole, can you take us through the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda is Resolution Number 541 of 2023. That's the payment of two warrant lists as outlined in your agenda in Item A. It's the ratification of eight warrant lists as outlined in Item B. That does include payments to Blair Senior Services in the total amount of $177,208. It's the ratification of total payroll for the check dated 11/17/23 in the total amount of $852,903.25, and a ratification of a miscellaneous payroll with a check dated 11/8/23 in the total amount of $995.16. It's budget transfers in Items E, F, G, H, and I. We're requesting approval for payment of an Application 16 received from Francis J. Palow on Bridges 87, 88, 89, and 92. That's the Box Clevett Group, in the total amount of $58,627.48. It's employment's terminations and employment status changes as outlined in your agenda in Items K, L, and M, respectively.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Webster, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I am an aye with an extension to the payment to Blair Senior Services.
The consent agenda is approved. The extension is noted, and we'll move on to staff reports and special business and begin with Item A, which is from the Coroner's Office, and Chief Deputy Coroner Ray Benton.
Good morning, Commissioners. I present to you today a request to approve a software licensing and maintenance support agreement with a attached appendix, which is requirements for the non-Blair County hosting of the services between the County of Blair and behalf of the Blair County Coroner's Office and the Quincy Technology Solution. This will give us up to five concurrent users with a medical examiner case management system in total $17,413 for the period of January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024. The funding used for this will be the vital statistics account, the 01A funding.
Okay. I know you've been putting a lot of work since you first came in on this and time on this, and appreciate your initiative on that. Ray, questions for Ray? You should have had individual discussions with him on this.
What took you so long? I'm just kidding.
There were some barriers, but we've worked through them.
I'm happy to see that this is moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, we like to do that at the meeting here. Is this going to be through your special fund for the initial purchase, and then the yearly amounts are in the budget? Is that correct?
Yes. The initial purchase of the program and the initial first year will be paid out of the vital statistics fund, and then following years will be just the annual subscription, which will come out of the general fund.
Thank you.
And Ray, do you have a estimate of what was that number this year? What were the annual subscriptions? I don't think that was...I'm not sure that was.
The combination of the two was 17, I believe roughly $9,000.
So, half, the other half was the initial one?
Yeah.
Very good. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Department of Emergency Services, Chris Ferguson. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning. We are requesting approval for Commissioner Bruce R. Urb to execute the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Worker Protection and Investment Certification Form on behalf of the County of Blair Department of Emergency Services as the grantee for further state grant funding reimbursement, certifying that the grantee is compliant with applicable Pennsylvania state labor and workforce safety laws, including but not limited to those listed in Paragraph A of said form. We actually, last year, did this as part of our grant application for our mosquito grant and our HMRF grant. This year, the state decided they just want one form, and based on my understanding, they're going to do this yearly, just have us do this one form to have on file.
Questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Sheriff Paul, under item C.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to request renewal of the contract between the County of Blair and informant 2000, which is our incident reporting system. It's been reviewed by Solicitor Mercyak, and it was in the dollar amount of $2,075, which was budgeted for the 2023 budget.
Any questions for Sheriff Paul? Again, one of the things, and this is obviously doesn't just pertain to this, but as we see more and more, we see higher cost increases in things, and in this case, it was 7.8%, which probably isn't too bad compared to some of the things we're seeing. But as, you know, we talked later about the 2024 budget, I think, you know, it's good for the public to realize that, you know, the inflation they see at the grocery store, the gas pump, we see in a myriad of places as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, our last contract was $1,925, so it increased to 2,075. We're seeing it across the board, unfortunately.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Prison and Deputy Warden Whitezel.
First agenda item is to ask for approval of a service agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of the Blair County Prison and park security and installation for electronics and cameras, et cetera, that need worked on down at the prison.
Questions or comments?
Jan, I did...I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The rate stated was $150 an hour, and there won't be no overtime. That's the standard rate.
So, that was going to be my question. I was wondering if they were just not charging us additional, or if they were not providing overtime or holiday service?
Yeah.
So, they'll provide the service just at the same rate?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? We'll move on.
Unfortunately, I got asked for a payment outside of the normal contract procedures once again. I came before you guys last month for a Roto-Rooter, and at the time, I was unaware of four additional payments, or four or five, what is it? Four, four additional payments that needed paid in the amount of $1,444, various incidences. One was the major flooding we had at the prison, and the other one was the backup line in the kitchen, which was found to be a tree branch in the line that couldn't be removed by our staff, so the maintenance was called Roto-Rooter in. That was all supposed to be taken care of via a contract. It never happened, so I'm sorry about that again.
Some of these do date back for a while, so unless there are questions for Deputy Warden, I am going to ask that a motion be made that we pay these now, not just because of the lateness of the dates on some of these.
I will make the motion after we pay the Roto-Rooter invoices on behalf of the prison.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Some favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Two items for Fort Roberto. Good morning, Emily.
Good morning. So, Fort Roberto is requesting approval for an editorial package for the 2024 Inspiration Guide by Happy Valley in State College in the amount of $1,000 for promotion of Fort Roberto through State College, Penn State University, and Center County Regional Markets.
Question?
I did have one, and Emily, I don't want to put you on the spot. I was trying to read quickly here. It looks like it's going to be published in January.
Yes.
With, and I'm looking more towards our finance department, with the way that we're budgeting, we're moving them into 2024's budget. I was more worried about this being a 2024 expenditure that they would need a PO for, but I'm thinking that it's going to be a 2023 one, so we'll talk that through in the office when we get back up there. Okay. And if I need to, I'll call Glenn.
That works.
Yeah. Thanks, Emily.
He can answer that question.
Yes.
And then we are also requesting approval of a gold partnership for the 2023-2024 agreement with Huntington County Visitors Bureau for promotion, a 1/6 horizontal page ad in their printed visitors guide, Ray's Town Moments, and for the total amount of $1,170 for promotion through the Ray's Town Lake region.
Please signify. Any questions?
Same thing. I'll talk to Lindsey.
There's the Thursday meeting.
Yep. Thank you.
Emily, you should show everybody your shirts off.
Oh. Fort Roberto also got new polo shirts. Yay!
Nice logo.
Yeah. It's good.
All right. Item F of Public Works, and...
Here she comes.
And here we have the one with one head but two hats.
That would be me.
Good morning, Mary.
Good morning. How are you? I have two items here for Public Works. The first one being requesting approval for a quote received for boiler refrigeration, heating, and air for replacement installation of one 1,900 BTU console, WSHP water furnace in the law clerk's office. The total amount is $10,773.24 to replace the compressor. You can omit the $3,341.82. That was just for a, what I would call a Band-Aid fix, so the actual amount is just the $10,773.24. Okay? The other amount on there is actually can be omitted.
Okay. So, on the, on this particular request, this is down now, so is this something of, this would be a more immediate need? Would you like the Board to take action or not?
Yes. Yes, please. I'll make a motion then that we approve the quote for replacement installation of the water furnace. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion?
I will just comment that I worked in the law clerk office, and there were times when I would come in...I actually had kept a thermometer on my desk because of temperature issues, and sometimes I would come in on a Monday, and it would be 50 degrees in there, so...
I think this was a long time coming.
Yes.
Here in 2023, we're getting it fixed.
Have you been to the register of records today?
Yes, and that's being fixed as well, so that was taken...that was called in yesterday.
All right. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is approved?
The second item on the list here is requesting approval for payment of an invoice. I believe it's outside the company's, county's purchasing policy. It was received late. Fury True Value Hardware and rental of a Bill Jack boom. It was rented on September 19th, 2023, in total amount of $630. It was back in September.
Any questions on this particular item? We'll move up to Thursday's business agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Public Works and Paul Shaper.
Three items on my agenda this morning. First one is requesting approval of a right-of-way agreement between the County of Blair and the Holliday-Burg Sewer Authority for the easement to be granted in the lieu of the condemnation of the excluded from realty transfer taxes in the sum of $1 for sanitary sewer line installation through land now or formerly the County of Blair parcel.
This has been reviewed by Attorney Connelly, Confer Council. Any questions on this particular matter?
Does anyone want to know if we get to add that dollar to our revenue for next year?
Maybe yes, yeah. Okay.
The second item is requesting approval for Commissioner Bruce Urb to sign the material profile sheet, Exhibit A, with a respect to respect to excavated material from the Blair County Bridges 87, 92 project sites for the contractor, Francis J. Palow, since the material tested contained condiments that require disposable at earth, clean earth of Maryland LLC.
Questions or discussion here? All right, it's a Thursday as well. I'm about to hear your report.
Third one, requesting approval of a proposal received from Gwen Dobson Foreman, Inc. to perform the 2024 Lake Mont Dam annual inspection and prepare the annual report for submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection in accordance with the PA DEP's Chapter 105 guideline, and the lump sum of $1,500. The work performed outside of said proposed fee shall be invoiced at hourly rate of $117 following authorization from the county.
Thank you. Questions or comments? We do it, so I take that to Thursday's business agenda as well. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Nicole is going to take the next four items for the Commissioners' Office.
The first one is requesting approval to ratify e-signatures effective November 13th of the intergovernmental agreement for intrusion detection services between the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, PMA, and the County of Blair, and also a grant agreement for the intergovernmental agreement between the Governor's Office and of Administration and the County of Blair. Both of those signatures and that grant needed to be turned in prior to our holiday break, so those signatures do need to be ratified at Thursday's meeting.
Questions?
The next item, if you remember, when we were suddenly dropped from our Blue Jeans licenses and had to quickly switch to Zoom, we took a shot in the dark and grabbed as many licenses that we thought we needed at the time and approved that purchase. Since then, we've had some feedback from our department heads and elected officials. We need additional 15 business licenses, and how Zoom adds those to our contract, we keep the current contract that we already have with the current expiration date when we set it, and I don't even remember that when that was. It was summer sometime. So, we will be prorated from today till the end of that first contract expiration. $2,998.50 will be prorated for the amount that we owe for the first partial year, and then we'll just kick back up with the same, so that way the contract stays the same, expiration dates are the same. It's actually a really nice feature that they have, so we'll just be prorated for that amount.
Any questions or not?
The next item is an item that is a pen dot request. Actually, we had signed a while ago a multimodal transportation fund grant reimbursement agreement. They do, it actually has not even come back to us from the state yet with fully executed signatures on the state side, and they already need to change one of the exhibits in the grant agreement. So, this is Exhibit J. It's just telling contractors a different way, clarifying a different way for the contractors to be able to search the current list of suspended and debarred Commonwealth contractors. So, if they're using subs on the project, or if they themselves think they're going to bid, they can now find it a different way, and it's an exhibit to the contract that we, or the agreement that we had already signed.
Questions?
And the last one kind of got lost in my, on my desk, and I apologize for that. This is a little untimely. We had voted, you had voted to allocate $200,000 to the UPMC Altoona for funding received under the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, for expenditure category 1.12 behavioral health, mental health services, and that is specifically for the EMPATH Center, the EMPATH unit that UPMC will be building, and that was part of the larger cost of the project, I believe totals more than $1 million.
Totals more than $2 million.
More than $2 million. Okay. It's growing. So, you had all committed $200,000. We finally got all of the paperwork in the grant agreement back from the attorney we're using for ARPA dollars, as well as back from UPMC with some different language. We've put all that together, and it's ready now before you to take action. And that will commit those funds, so then they do meet the guidelines and requirements for the 2024 termination of those funds, because we do have to have them committed by the end of 2024. That will allow the hospital to complete the project through the end of 2026, and this is a reimbursement, so they do have to spend it all, and then they'll provide invoices to us, and we will reimburse them $200,000 of the project, is how that's set up.
Again, this has been a while since the Board had originally approved that. This is a mental health center that is embedded in the hospital and essentially is built as more of a cool-off unit that allows law enforcement and others to bring individuals who are suffering episodes of mental health issues and have the opportunity to be there with professional counseling, a cooling-off period. Quite frankly, it's safe from coming out to the prison, which is where they would likely come otherwise. And it's proven, it's evidence-based practice currently done at Western Site in Allegheny County, and UPMC is setting up one other EMPATH Center besides the other one, the other one is named Fever.
Who's going to start up the work on?
Not the physical work, no. Still the plan is that the approvals through Pittsburgh, which is what takes so laboriously long. Now to the moment that everyone is waiting for in this particular meeting, and that is the introduction of the 2024 budget, but quickly the review of committed funds, and Finance Director Lindsey Dempsey. Good morning, Lindsey.
Good morning. So, first, we're going to review the committed funds. This is requesting approval to reduce the committed funds amount in the general fund from $200,723 to $183,390, and this includes post-trauma and healthcare and workers' home.
And this is an action that each year we, it's those amounts that have been actuarially determined we get the, which is essentially a very educated estimate. We get actual numbers as they need adjusted, and so at this point in time, I'm going to make a motion to reduce the general fund, committing funds as outlined by Lindsey.
Is there a second to that?
Mr. Webster, second.
Any questions or discussion? Some favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is approved, Lindsey, and we will now move on to your second item.
All right. So, today, I'm requesting approval to introduce the county budget for the 2024 fiscal year for public review and inspection. The general fund budget includes total revenue of $45,613,598 and expense of $48,965,679 with a net deficit of $3,352,081. This deficit will be covered by the county's 23 projected unassigned fund balance of $13,689,610. This expense figure is $6,135 lower than what was presented on November 17th. This was a result of additions and subtractions in the CYF, 911, and Commissioners' budgets. And a copy of the '24 budget will be made available both on our website and in the Commissioners' office, and this will also be through advertisement.
The Commissioners have all received a budget, the final budget package from our Finance Director, and obviously, this was reviewed in much detail in our public budget meetings, including mostly the last one where we made the final tweaks on that. Are there any questions anybody has of Lindsey at this point in time? Are there any uh questions anybody has of Lindsey at this point in time? They're all like more intimately familiar with this and uh, we maybe care to be, and then it was, and it was a very difficult budget because we are, again, for the reasons that we've discussed before, and not just the general inflationary trends, but like the bargaining agreements that uh we have signed and ones that are anticipated, including uh, I think we have three CBAs next year, two U M W A and ask me.
We have one.
That's for the, the.
And then we'll start bargaining the three that you said in next year. Yeah.
So uh, you know, we are gonna have some things upcoming that uh, and as well as we talked before about the nine-year salary adjustment, those, uh, and we're going to again do some examining and studying of those salaries to make sure we'll market several of those equity there, and in doing that, um, we have put a sizable amount, and you can tell me what that is specifically, Lindsey, in terms of, or the, what we put in contingency for that.
Three hundred thousand for the study.
All right, I, uh, and uh, I'm going to therefore make a, a motion at this time that we approve the introduction of the general funds and reserve fund budgets for uh, as presented for, by the Finance Director. Is there a second to that?
Mr. Webster, I'll second.
Any other questions? Favor the motion, please signify by saying aye. Um, that is approved, and Lindsey, the date, the meeting date that we will uh make the vote, final vote on the budget is December twenty.
December nineteenth.
Nineteen. One day. So yeah, thank you very much, and thank you for your work and yourself.
Thank you.
We have no old business, and we've reached the end of our agenda, so we're gonna turn at this time and thank everyone for their participation in today's meeting.